Six, two thousand and seventeen has now been called to order. We have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Latour. Mr. Mackey, Dr. Mackey.
Heavenly Father, please look over this community. Help us guide the community that we will always be safe and feel helped by your guidance, now and forever. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the God of our citizens, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Madam Secretary.
Here.
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 President.
Here.
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 Thank you, Ms. Kathy.
For any of you that have cell phones or pages, we ask that you would put those devices to silence while we conduct our meeting on this evening. And if any of you that would have anything that would like to say on any of the items that we have on the agenda tonight, we'd actually pick up a blue slip from the rear of the room and bring that to Ms. Jessica or Ms. Kathy, and we'll make sure and get you on the agenda. At this time, we will proceed as follows. Item number four. Presentation of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFR, for the year ending December thirty first, two thousand and sixteen. Ms. Buffkin.
We have Kyle Judeece from McQuirk Quirk and Birch and Company to present our financial statements for the year ending December thirty first, two thousand and sixteen.
Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Kyle Judeece, forty-five oh nine Shelley Lane, Lake Charles, Louisiana, seven oh six oh five. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to discuss the Calcahue Parish Police Jury's Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, also called the CAFR, and the separately issued report on compliance and internal control for the year ended December thirty first, two thousand and sixteen. First, I'd like to commend the police jury on receiving the GFOA's Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the two thousand and fifteen report submission. This is the twenty-fifth consecutive year that the police jury has received this award. It's awarded on the basis of issuing easily readable and efficiently organized financial information in the form of a CAFR that also satisfies all generally accepted accounting principles as well as applicable legal requirements. As is the custom, the two thousand and sixteen CAFR will also be submitted to the GFOA, and we believe that it's also worthy of the same recognition. You have two bound reports in front of you, and the CAFR is a larger one, which we'll discuss briefly first. And the CAFR is divided into three sections with the yellow tabs. It's introductory section, financial section, and statistical section. We'll do a very brief overview of each one of them. You don't need to turn to the introductory section, but it includes the transmittal letter, the prior year GFOA certificate that I just mentioned, an entity-wide organizational chart, and a list of principal officials. Second tab, financial section, the second yellow tab, includes the independent auditor's report, management's discussion and analysis, basic financial statements, the notes to those financial statements, required supplementary information, and other supplementary information. And we'll come back to that section briefly. The statistical section is a collection of exhibits that provide operational, economic, historical data to provide a context for assessing the government's economic condition. So I'd like to briefly go back to the financial section, if you'll open that, the second yellow tab. You'll see on page one is the independent auditor's report. The purpose of an audit is to render an opinion on whether the financial statements are fairly presented. We have issued an unmodified opinion, which means we do believe the financial statements are presented, are fairly presented, and in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Turn with me to page five, you'll see the management's discussion and analysis. And we're not going to read through that, but it is a valuable tool to provide year-to-year comparisons and explanations, and it's a good tool to learn what happened financially during the year without having to dig down into individual financial statements. Following the M, D, and A is the basic financial statements. And if you'll turn with me to page twenty-seven, you'll see the column, total governmental funds. These don't include proprietary, these are the governmental funds. And you'll see that total revenues for December thirty first, two thousand and sixteen are approximately one hundred and sixty-two million dollars. That's up ten million from last year. You'll see that total expenditures are approximately one hundred and thirty-six million. That's up approximately twenty-one million from last year. You'll see for two thousand and sixteen that the police jury had an excess of revenues over expenditures of approximately twenty-six million dollars. That's a brief overview of the CAFR. The notes behind the financial statements provide more detail on various line items such as cash and debt and fixed assets. Now I'd like to look at the smaller green bound report. This is the separately issued report on compliance and internal control. What I'd like to look at there is the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. It's located on pages ten through nineteen, but I'm going to ask you to turn to page sixteen. You'll see for the year ended, primary government had federal expenditures of approximately fourteen million compared to twelve million last year. You'll see that on the next page, component units had federal expenditures of approximately three million, which is comparable to three million last year as well. And you don't need to turn there, but on pages twenty-six through thirty are various recommendations for improvement, internal control, and compliance for various component units. The primary government had no findings for the year. And that's just a brief overview of both these reports. If you have any questions, I'll answer them whether now or if you have any later, you can contact me at the office. We're thankful for the opportunity to provide our services to the police jury. Special thank you to the finance department for their assistance and cooperation throughout the course of our audit, and a special thank you to Ms. Tammy Buffkin and Ms. Kelly Fontenot for all their hard work in compiling the CAFR and having it issued in a timely manner.
Is there any questions by the jury?
I would leave the received report, Mr. President.
Second, I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Point and a second by Mr. Latour. Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carry. Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Moving on to item number five. Take appropriate action on application for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Crane.
Mr. President, we have two applications before you tonight. We recommend they be approved.
I have a motion by Mr. Gillery and a second by Mr. Collins. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Motion carry. Item number six. Consideration approving payments of all current--
Move on six.
I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Point and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carry. Item number seven. Consideration approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated June first, two thousand and seventeen.
Move.
I have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Gillery. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carry. Item number eight. Consideration of approving the Parish-wide Drainage Liaison Committee report dated June twenty-ninth, two thousand and seventeen. At this time, I'd call on Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Parish-wide Drainage Liaison Committee met on July sixth, two thousand and seven, on June twenty-ninth at three forty-five P.M. for the purpose of receiving public input on proposed revisions to Chapter twenty-six of the Code of Ordinance pertaining to drainage standards. After a brief recap by Mr. Beam of the ordinance revision proposal process, Chairman Scott explained that the focus of the meeting was to hear comments and questions from the public on any issues related to the ordinance revisions which were presented to the committee on June thirteenth. Several speakers appeared before the committee covering various items related to the proposed standards and stressed importance of looking at all aspects of the drainage problems in the parish. At the conclusion of input from all speakers, Chairman Scott stated that no action was being taken at this meeting and that all of the input received will be taken into consideration as we move forward on this issue. I move for that. Mr. President.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Scott. I have a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Ms. Trimmie. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carry. Mr. Beam, would you want to add anything to that, or did that--
No, that was fine, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, sir. Motion carry. Item number nine. Consideration of approving the Public Works Committee report dated June twenty-ninth, two thousand and seventeen. Mr. Barris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item A, presented a retirement certificate to Ms. Karen Terrio. Item B, recommended that a resolution be adopted approving an amendment to the contract for the Hamre Road Extension Project. Item C, recommended that a resolution be adopted approving a temporary servitude agreement for the Jim Kent Road Bridge Replacement Project. Item D, recommended that a resolution be adopted approving an act of sale agreement for the Nursery Street Bridge Replacement Project. Item E, excuse me, recommended that a resolution be adopted approving an act of donation agreement for the Shadows at Bayou Oaks sewer plant site. Item F, recommended that a resolution be adopted approving an act of sale agreement for the Old Spanish Trail Road Improvement Project. Item G, recommended that a resolution be adopted approving an amendment to the contract for the Old Spanish Trail KCS Overpass Project. Item H, recommended that the parish engineer be authorized to advertise for Coach Williams Drive Extension from Old Spanish Trail to Houston River Road. Item I, recommended that a resolution be adopted accepting Senator J. Bennett Johnson Avenue Drainage Improvement Project as substantially complete. That is my report, Mr. President, and I move to accept.
Thank you, Mr. Barris. I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carry. Moving on to item number ten. Consideration of approving the Agenda Committee report dated June twenty-ninth, two thousand and seventeen. I have a motion by Mr. Fornum and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carry. Item number eleven. Consideration of authorizing the parish administrator to publish a proposed ordinance declaring approximately zero point six five one acres of property located in Industrial Avenue as surplus property no longer needed for public purposes. I have a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Ms. Trimmie. Any discussion? Any objection?
I do.
We do have objections. Mr. Landry.
Is that at the end, Industrial Avenue?
Yes, sir, Mr. Landry. This is the property located right next to the current, we call it our warehouse where our documents are located, and we've had some business owners in the area express interest in this property, and we really do not have any future use of it. We still have ample opportunity for growth in that area, so we think it's best to put this item on the agenda, and we'll be advertising for bids on August third.
So you think you're going to sell it pretty soon?
Yes, sir.
If you held out for a service road on that interstate, you'd get a whole lot more money than what you're fixing to get for it, I can tell you that.
I agree with that. That would be on the east side.
But then we've got to mow the grass.
This is on the opposite side of that property, so you're correct. This is on the west side of the property as you're driving into Industrial Avenue.
Oh, yeah, that would have about no use, I don't imagine. So you still got the back park?
Yes, we do.
Got the city park on the property that nobody goes to?
We do.
Yeah, I've been there. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landry.
I'm telling you, you go any day of the week, any time of the day, there's never anyone at that park. I mean, never.
Do they know about it?
Maybe not, maybe they should advertise.
We're not going to advertise, though.
No, I don't think so.
Probably because it's smoke-free.
That's the city problem.
Any other discussion? Just again, the objection. Motion carry. Moving on to item number twelve. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving a coastal use permit application for a BFI --
Move on twelve.
--second, installation of twenty-seven tree well-ground well-treatment systems within coastal zone boundaries. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Point and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carry. Moving on to item number thirteen. Consideration of adopting a resolution supporting the Sabine Marsh Creation Cycle Six and Seven Project for Phase One funding for the Coastal Wetlands Planning, Testing, and Restoration Task Force. I have a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carry. Moving on to item number fourteen. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving--
Move on fourteen. Second.
--revisions of the coastal management plan for Calcahue Parish. I have a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carry. Moving on to item number fifteen. Consideration of adopting an ordinance rescinding ordinance number sixty-eight sixty-seven due to the prospective purchaser failing to fulfill the necessary requirements in order to complete the sale. I have a motion by Ms. Mayo, I have a motion by Mr. Scott, and a second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carry. Item number sixteen. Consideration of adopting a resolution--
Move on sixteen. Second.
Excuse me, consideration of adopting an ordinance rescinding ordinance number sixty-eight sixty-eight due to the prospective purchaser failing to fulfill the necessary requirements in order to complete the sale. I have a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carry. Moving on to item number seventeen. Consideration of approving the recommendations of the Director of the Division of Planning and Development in reference to the adjudicated property sales conducted on June twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen. I have a motion by Mr. Collins on all bullets and a second by Mr. Barris. Let me read those to the record, please. A, eleven thirty-four Rosa Park Road, Dequincy, Quentin Taylor for forty-five hundred dollars. B, sixteen seventeen Sunset Drive, Lay Charles, Derek Taylor for seventeen thousand. C, thirty-six twenty-two McKinley Street, Lay Charles, Harold LaSalle for fifty-two hundred dollars. D, nine fourteen Industrial Street, Vinton, Vanessa Rose for forty-nine hundred dollars. E, one-third intent in south of Presley Park Drive, Lay Charles, Mary Horton Mondello for a hundred dollars. F, seventeen thirteen Sunset Drive, Lay Charles, Franklin Mason Enterprise, LLC for seventy-five hundred dollars. G, north of seventeen thirteen Sunset Drive, Lay Charles, James McNeil for a hundred dollars. I had a motion on all bullets and a second. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Motion carry. Item number eighteen. Consideration of authorizing the purchasing agent of either advertise for bids for one two thousand and seventeen or sports utility vehicle SUV for use by the Workforce Development Board. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Point and a second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carry. Item number nineteen. Consideration of authorizing the parish purchasing agent to advertise for REHs or request for proposal for one emergency debris removal service and two emergency debris monitoring service. I have a motion by Ms. Trimmie and a second by Mr. Fornum. We have discussion. Mr. Gillery.
Alan, are we just renewing? Is it time to renew or go on to new contracts or just?
This will be a renewal year in terms of we'll accept new proposals this year. Our current contract's set to expire later in two thousand and seventeen, so this proposal will receive brand-new proposals from anyone wanting to submit, will select, it'll be awarded like our old one for one year and renewed one year annually for up to three years. So basically, this can be up to about a four-year award.
Have many companies came to?
Yeah, this will be advertised to all the companies that generally serve in the large debris removal practices.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillery. Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carry. Item number twenty. Take appropriate actions on beers received by the parish purchasing agent for the following. A, Calcahue Parish Project Number Two thousand and seventeen dash oh four.
Move to accept a low bid.
The agenda note reads, thank you, Ms. Trimmie. The agenda note reads, the parish engineer recommends that the low bid in the amount of three million eight hundred ninety-two thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-nine cent for RE Height Construction LLC be accepted. Let me read those two items into the record. B, June twenty-ninth, two thousand and seventeen, four tank cars and two flat cars. C, June twenty-ninth, two thousand and seventeen, sheep pile. I have a motion by Ms. Trimmie and a second by Mr. Latour. And Mr. Barris has a question. You may have the floor, Mr. Barris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like this contractor, and all contractors that do roadside, roadwork in our parish, of the general housekeeping rules that we have, I would like to know that the staff is going to take care of them and monitor them as far as their construction debris process, during the construction process in our ditches, blocking our culverts. We're having some issues right now with the state having to go behind these folks, and I just want them to be reminded of their duty to take care of their business while they're doing work for us and representing us. Thank you, Mr. President.
That's a good point, Mr. Barris. I totally agree. Ms. Andrew Point.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bowlen, if we're talking about flat cars here off Barney Huff Power Road, that issue we discussed here some time back, where are we on that?
Yes, sir, we are moving on that structure that's over that drainage lateral because the homeowners need that access. I believe this might be for another set of structures, I'm not sure, but that is high priority. I think it's one or two on the list right now.
High priority is what I wanted to hear. Thank you. Are you back?
Any other discussion?
He knew that, that's why he said it.
Any objection? Motion carry. Moving on to item number twenty-one. Take appropriate actions on the terms of the following members of the various boards and districts. We're going to have to take these one by one. A, Mr. Lawrence Huffauer.
I'd like to move to reappoint Mr. Blaine Harrison. Or appoint Mr. Blaine Harrison.
Okay, Mr. Latour would like to appoint Mr. Blaine Harrison, and I have a second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion carries. B, Workforce Development Board, Ms. Tamika Simeon.
I'd like to move to reappoint Ms. Tamika--
Second.
--Simeon.
Mr. Latour moves to reappoint Ms. Simeon, and I have a second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Moving on to the private sector nominee, I have Mr. Darrell Henigan.
I'd like to move to appoint--
Second.
--Mr. Pascal Malone.
Mr. Latour moves to reappoint Mr. Malone, and I have a second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion carries. I have also Mr. Toby Leje.
Move to defer for thirty days.
Mr. Latour asked that the nomination of Mr. Toby Leje be deferred for thirty days and have a second by Ms. Mayo. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. I have Mr. Carlos Perez for state president.
My screen moved out.
We have an appointment for Mr. Steve Gaspar. Would you like to go with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Latour moves that Mr. Steve Gaspar be appointed, and do I have a second by Ms. Mayo?
Second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gillery beat you to it, Ms. Mayo. I have a second by Mr. Gillery. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. My next one is chief elected official. I have Ms. Karen Klepp.
I'd like to appoint Mr. Toby Leje.
All right, Mr. Latour asked Toby Leje be appointed, and I have a second by Ms. Mayo. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Moving on to item number C, Ms. Linda Dugos, Community Center and Playground--
Moves to reappoint Ms. Linda Dugos.
Second.
Mr. Barris moves that he would like to reappoint Ms. Dugos, and I have a second by Mr. Collins. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Moving on to D, Mr. Dwight Primo.
I'd like to move to reappoint Mr. Dwight Primo.
Second.
Mr. Latour moves that Mr. Dwight Primo be reappointed, and I have a second by Ms. Mayo. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Moving on to item E, Mr. Mike Atwell.
I'd like to reappoint Mr. Mike Atwell.
Community Center and Playground District Number Seven of Ward Two. Mr. Latour moves that Mr. Atwell be reappointed, and I have a second by Ms. Mayo. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Motion carry. Item F, Mr. Tony Obanyan. Community Center and Playground District Number Five of Ward Five. Ms. Trimmie moves that Mr. Obanyan be reappointed, and I have a second by Mr. Landry. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Number G, Mr. Mike West, Community Center and Playground District Number Five of Ward Ms. Trimmie moves that Mr. Obanyan be reappointed, and I have a second by Ms. Mayo. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Item G, Mr. Mike West, Community Playground District Number Five of Ward Five. Did I just redo that one? I'm moving too fast, Ms. Trimmie, I need to slow down. Item H, Mr. Matt Sonney.
Move to defer for thirty days.
Community Playground District Number Four of Ward One. I have a motion by Mr. White to reappoint, and I have a second by-- That was to defer, I'm sorry. I have a motion by Mr. White to defer for thirty days, and I have a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Moving on to I, Mr. Joe D. Gentry Jr., Community Center and Playground District Number Four of Ward One. Mr. White moves that Mr. Gentry be reappointed, and I have a second by Ms. Latour. Is there any discussion? Any objection?
I need to speak on J.
Well, I need to correct that when Mr. Landry said that second was by Mr. Collins, and that motion was by Mr. White. Any discussion? Any objection? We do have discussion by Ms. Trimmie.
On J.
On J? I haven't gotten there yet, Ms. Trimmie, I'm on my way. Wait for me, Ms. Trimmie, I'm on my way. Motion carry on item I. Moving on to J, Ms. Julia L. Page, Community Center and Playground District Number One of Ward Six.
Yes, Ms. Julia called me Monday. I've been waiting on her call. She's in her nineties. She's been on this board for more than thirty years.
Right sometime.
We're going to find out exactly how many, because I'm going to do a resolution. But we had a wonderful call. It's amazing, she's so sharp. She's wheelchair-bound now. She even, she had to give up being a pink lady at the Dequincy Hospital. I mean, this was like really hard for her, and we had a wonderful talk. She can remember any number you give her. You give her your phone number, it's there. She'll know it. Next year, you ask her, she'll tell you. I mean, she was just, we had the most amazing visit, and so what I asked her to do is for her to help me find her replacement. She called to tell me that she doesn't think she can do it anymore, and I said, will you help me find a replacement? And she said, yes, I will. And so I suggested somebody, and she said, give me that number. So I hadn't heard back from her, so she's still on the point of finding her replacement, and I'm going to--
Well, you just moved to defer for thirty days.
I am, but I had to say something wonderful about Julia because she deserved it. She's just a wonderful person. She's a schoolteacher for all those years, for forty years, I mean, just everybody loves Julia, so I just had to say that, put it on record.
If you'd have just deferred for thirty days, we wouldn't have known all that.
That's my point.
Get the labor pains, get to the--
So now I defer for thirty days. I second Francis's motion to defer--
That wasn't a motion, that was a recommendation.
Oh, I take his recommendation, but I put a big star on that one.
What happened? The devil made me do that.
He's made all of us do that.
Yeah, some of us do it, I don't know.
What you laughing at, Kevin?
Make that boy lose his--
What was that, Mr. Landry?
We got a motion by Ms. Trimmie. Defer for thirty days.
Oh, okay.
That was on Ms. Page.
On Ms. Page, on J, Ms. Kathy.
I got K next coming up.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Trimmie. You know we love you.
I know you do. That's why I take it like I do.
Moving on to--
K.
Mr. Landry, we're loving him.
K. And that's me, too.
We're on K. Ms. Monique. Go ahead, Ms. Trimmie, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Monique Dill, reappoint.
Okay, we want to reappoint Ms. Monique Dill, Community Center Playground District Number One of Ward Six. And I have a motion by Ms. Trimmie and a second by Ms. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. L, Mr. Scott Spell, Community Center and Playground District Number Three of Ward Seven. Mr. Barris.
Move to reappoint Mr. Scott Spell.
Yeah, we're on L, Mr. Barris. We don't mean to disturb you.
I know you and Mr. Andrew Point was holding deep conversation there. We didn't want to disturb the guy. Thank you, Mr. Barris. I have a motion by Mr. Barris to reappoint. I have a stick by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry.
Move on, Mr. President, in case you wonder what's going on here tonight.
M, Mr. Jade Ellander, Community Center and Playground District-
Move to appoint Ms. Tina Brown.
Mr. Barris moves to reappoint Ms. Tina Brown. I have a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Number N, Mr. Matthew L. Vincent, Community Center and Playground District Number Two of Ward Four. I have a motion by Mr. Fornum to reappoint Mr. David, and I have a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion?
And number N.
Any objection? Motion carry.
Well, when a tickle button gets cut on, it's really hard.
Cut on, sorry. Item O.
Oh, goodness.
Ms. Sally Fennett, Recreation District Number One of Ward Three.
Move to reappoint.
I have a motion by Mr. Landry to reappoint and a second by Mr. Scott. Thank you so much for that. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. P, Mr. James Gary-
Reappoint Mr. Gay Gobert.
I have a motion by Mr. Scott to reappoint Mr. Gobert and a second by Mr. Gillery. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carry. R, Ms. Bridget Martin- Coliseum Advisory Council. I missed it, I'm sorry. It jumped on me, Mr. Landry. Thank you for being there with me, though. Q, Mr. James Jimmy Mo, Burton Coliseum Advisory Council.
Move to reappoint.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. White and a second by Dr. Mackey.
Anywhere you want to go.
Any discussion? To reappoint. Any objection? That motion will carry. Moving on to R, Ms. Bridget Martin-
Move to reappoint Ms. Bridget Martin.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. White to reappoint and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. S, Mr. Braylon L. Harris.
Move to reappoint Mr. Harris.
Burton Coliseum Advisory Council. I have a motion by Mr. White and a second by Dr. Mackey. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carry. T, Mr. Dale Bernard, Burton Coliseum Advisory Council. I have a motion by Ms. Latour to reappoint and a second, no, to reappoint Mr. Bernard Tally, and a second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Mine keep jumping, Mr. Landry. U, Mr. Mark LeBlanc, Burton Coliseum Advisory Council. I have a motion by Ms. Latour to reappoint and a second by Mr. Latour.
White.
White, I'm sorry. They running together, y'all work with me. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carry. V, Mr. Mark Peterson, Burton Coliseum Advisory Council.